Mr. Chair, recording has begun.
Thank you. It is six o'clock. We have a quorum. I call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Hyde to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and the Jude Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to point out that Commissioner Sampson is out of town, not here tonight. We do have a quorum in his absence. First item is review and approval of the minutes from the July 5th meeting. And Commissioner, have a comment on the minutes? Is there a motion?
Chairman Gann, I move we approve the meetings from the July 5th meeting.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Commissioner Hyde, thank you. All in favor? By show of hands? The minutes are approved unanimously. Thank you. Matters of discussion, Pine Grove Neighborhood, Q Lot 1. Director Harrington.
Good evening, Planning Commission. For the record, Janine Harrington, Director of Planning for the Town of La Plata. So for this project, Neighborhood Q, Lot 1 specifically, the applicant owner is DHI Communities with their representative, John Damron, and the engineer on the project is Rogers Consulting. The project is zoned TDX. It is currently vacant. Lot 1, which we are reviewing tonight, is 15.219 acres. To the north is industrial zoning for Charles County. To the south is an extension of the Pine Grove Development with TDX zoning. To the east is industrial Charles County land, and to the west is also industrial Charles County land. So the applicant submitted an application for the major site plan on June 1st of 2023 for the review and approval of the multifamily complex for Neighborhood Q. They've also submitted a TDX justification report, which is attached to the agenda, which outlines the requirements of the approved master site development plan and compliance with the 2020 Comprehensive Plan. So if the entirety of Neighborhood Q is approximately 57.882 acres, they submitted a minor subdivision plat, which is, we currently have the record recording package right now to be recorded, and they're breaking it off into three lots. So tonight, we're looking at Lot 1. The project is adjacent to Rosewick Road and will contain nine apartment buildings with 288 dwelling units. Three of the buildings will be three-story garden-style apartment units with 24 units each, and six of the buildings will be three-story garden-style apartments with 36 units each. Development is proposing a 6,360 square-foot clubhouse with a pool, dog park, playground areas, walking paths, and open space to fulfill the recreation requirements. Throughout the parking lot, garage units, and storage units will also be provided for residents to use. Going into the code requirements for Chapter 108 Resource Protection Standards, the project is in compliance with Chapter 108 Resource Protection Standards. There is a stream that's present on future Lot 3. There's nothing within Lot 1. However, it is being protected by forest, permanent forest conservation easement. There are wetlands present on the site, however, they did get approval from both the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and MDE for any wetland disturbance and mitigation that was needed for that project. There are no steep slopes or highly erodible soils present on Lot 1. There is FIDS habitat, and that would just limit construction activity during certain months of the year. That goes through the Maryland Department of the Environment for approval as well. And I attached to the agenda the approved forest conservation plan for the overall Neighborhood Q, which provides 6.75 acres of permanent forest conservation easement. Under stormwater management, the proposed development is in compliance. They've had their Step 1 and Step 2 stormwater management plans reviewed and approved. For Chapter 170 Streets and Sidewalks, the project is in compliance. They are providing a spine road into Neighborhood Q that will also connect over to the proposed Neighborhood P called Rising Pine Road. They did a separate utility improvement plan for those roadway plans. Those are being reviewed and approved by SMECO, our Operations Department Planning, and others, including Soil Conservation District. They will also need to get a permit through Charles County Government for the entrance onto Rosewick Road. The parking lot has been designed to provide adequate circulation throughout the site. They have proposed five-foot sidewalks along the main Rising Pine Road that connects into the neighborhood, as well as the overall sidewalk connections that will happen on Rosewick Road. And there will be four-foot sidewalks provided throughout the interior of the complex that are all ADA compliant. As far as water and sewer is concerned, at this time, they have, we have water and sewer allocations available for this project. I've started a new template for our site plans where I show how much water and sewer estimated gallons per day are going to be needed for the project, and I take that from what the remaining capacity that we have currently on the books, so you can see that there is water and sewer available for this project. For the TDX mixed development zone, as noted, the master site development plan was approved by Resolution 2108 on April 19th, 2021, and I would refer to the TDX justification report attached to the agenda for the individual requirements. They are in compliance with our lighting regulations. Everything is being reviewed and approved by SMECO at the current time. For parking requirements, they are not in compliance with the Chapter 191-44 parking requirements under the town code for multifamily parking, so they have provided a parking waiver. For the use for the multifamily dwellings, they would be required to have 720 parking spaces. They are proposing 450. And for the clubhouse, they'd be required to have 23 parking spaces, and they're proposing 15. So the total would be, under required parking, 743, and the proposed parking would be 465. So under the explanation for the TDX zone, the TDX zone does want, encourages efficient land use by facilitating high compact density development and minimizing the amount of land that's needed for surface parking. So they did provide their justification and their calculations with their parking waiver. As far as landscaping, they are in compliance with all of the landscaping requirements. I won't read through all of this, since it's all present within the staff report, but they do meet the, and exceed the interior parking lot landscaping, the perimeter landscaping, and the perimeter landscaping that's adjacent to a public right-of-way. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the major site plan in accordance with the town code and the 2020 Comprehensive Plan. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have of me, and we do have the applicant should you have any questions with them.
Would the applicant like to make any comment?
Just make sure it's green.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Absolutely. Danielle Conroy with Rogers Consulting. I appreciate the support. Appreciate Ms. Harrington and her support. I'm here to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners?
Chairman Gann?
Yes.
Evelyn Bryant Ward. Director Harrington, I know that we've had requests for parking waivers in the past, and we were working on amending that section that addressed parking. Did we make those?
No.
Okay.
It's on my list of to-dos.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions or comments?
I do have a question. Commissioner Banks, just because my math could be off a little bit. Based on my calculation, at this point, we're talking about 1.5 parking spots per unit. Is that correct? So one and a half?
I believe it's 1.6 something or so, and that's not including the garages that we're providing.
Thank you.
Oh, that's a good question. Not including the garages?
Correct.
Okay. You want to finish your comment, questions?
So could you explain a little bit more about how the garages and the parking spaces would be allocated?
I have to look at the parking table. I'm not, I don't have that with me. Do you have it in the staff report, Janine?
You have, I don't have it in the staff report. I have the parking waiver, which shows garage parking spaces, 58 spaces.
Yeah, as Director Harrington mentioned earlier, the TDX zoning that Pine Grove is within requires us to limit the surface parking as much as possible and to provide shared parking anywhere we can, which is why we have the connection to the commercial area in Neighborhood P so close by.
I think the question for the garage parking, are those going to be for people to rent? How are they going to get the garage parking spaces?
Absolutely. If you wouldn't mind, introduce John Damron with DJ.
Good evening, everyone. John Damron with DHI Communities, a subsidiary of De'Aaron Horton, the master developer. We typically provide either free or very low charge parking across our communities. The planned carriage house garages are going to be first come, first served, and available for rent. That's the anticipation. Hopefully, folks will find value in them. If they don't, obviously, we'll decrease the cost until they are utilized fully.
Thank you. I'm going to shift gears. Are there any more questions with respect to parks?
Probably a more general one. Just are there other options you consider for parking in addition to the garage and the surface lots as you looked at the plan?
So we did not consider, say, parking garage with the general intent of the MSDP. We didn't feel that that would fit the intent of the residential portion of the property. So, no.
Is there on-street parking with Rising Pine Road? Do I recall that?
Not with Rising Pine Road. There's not on-street parking on that STEM Road of Rising Pine until it becomes private, which is past the connection point with Neighborhood P.
So my question there, I read the justification for the variance, and it seemed to go along the lines where you just said, that, you know, we do want smaller amount of parking in a TDX zone, but I'm going after function. I mean, how many people will be living in these apartments? How many adults, and therefore drivers, will be living in these apartments? Will we really be able to fit all the cars for fully occupied apartments? And secondly, are these really, are these apartments or condos? Are the, are these going to be rented spaces, or will people living there be buying them?
Let John come back.
So typically, across the country, you know, our parking ratios typically range from 1.25 to 2.25, depending on the mix of units that we have in any given community. This is a healthy mix of one, two, and three-bedroom or rent apartments, which are typically single families, single adults, or older members of the community. Not as many families with large car needs are typically as popular in our rental communities. We typically, in this type of setting, in a suburban environment that is close to town, but there is still a community requirement to target right around 1.5 to 1.7. And I think with our garages, we're right around that ratio. So we can't tell you today how many people will be living in the 288 apartments. Someone could say, I want a three-bedroom, and it's just me. But we do think, you know, through developing, you know, 10,000 or so of these a year across the country, 1.7 for this type of location feels great for us. And I'm here to, you know, create a great lifestyle for our renters. And if I thought there weren't enough parking spaces, I truly want to build more to satisfy those renters, that they would be welcome into our community. If they decide not to live here because I didn't build a parking spot, that would be a huge failure on my part. And so we've targeted, with Rogers' help, you know, the right balance between providing too little and too much. And so right around that 1.7 ratio is what we were targeting, also kind of balancing, you know, paving as little of the site as we could. And in this location, I know the other commissioner had asked about other alternatives. It would either be building up or building down, and we just, we really, it's not economical here in this part of the world to do that, right? Downtown DC, maybe so, but out here, it just makes more sense to, yeah, I would have to charge a million dollars a month in order to pay for that, and nobody can afford to live here for that. So that's kind of how we thought about our parking program.
So I'm encouraged to hear that you've actually had developments with as low as 1.25, and that's worked. And we're higher than that in this case.
Certainly.
Chairman, Director Harrington, if you can explain what's currently required, that we currently require for parking, and what we're proposing, you know, when we make the amendment to 191-44, that would probably help some of the commissioners understand where we are.
So under Chapter 191-44, for the parking requirements, it's two parking spaces per dwelling unit plus one guest space for every two dwelling units. So 2.5 dwelling units per dwelling, or 2.5 spaces per dwelling unit. And that's where the 720 of required parking spaces comes from. And then for the clubhouse, which it's a separate use, but really, when you think about it, it's the people within the community are going to be using that clubhouse, so people aren't driving to the clubhouse separately. So that, under the code, would be 23 parking spaces for a total of 743. So as we've had conversations in the past, not only does our Comprehensive Plan state that we should limit surface parking, but the TDX zone states that as well. So in the past, we've used the ITE, and the terminology is escaping me at the moment, the international, what are engineers, they do a lot of parking calculations. But there's a standard that's utilized nationwide for parking requirements. So we're looking to move more towards utilizing the ITE standards rather than trying to generate our own parking numbers when it's already something that's been standardized across the nation.
What does the ITE require?
I don't know.
But it's likely lower than what we require.
It is.
So we're going to move towards that?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions or comments for the applicant or for the director?
I do have a question, and let me preface it by saying I understand it's not a requirement in your, you know, your for-profit and not otherwise, but with respect to the apartments, are there any considerations with respect to low-income set-aside?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I asked for a motion, and the proposal is to approve this major site plan.
Chairman Gann, I move that we approve the major site plan as presented.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. By show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, the vote is three to one in favor. The motion passes. Thank you very much for your visit. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda. Make sure I'm not skipping something here. Is the 2023 MML presentation. I think you want to annex. I think this is what Councilwoman Bryant Ward asked Director Harrington to provide to us. This will be good re-education for some of us, and definitely good education for our newest commissioner.
Nate DeTrem. Sampson's not here.
Director Harrington, you have the floor.
Okay. So this was the presentation that was done by, it was through the Maryland Department of Planning, Joe Griffiths, and he asked me to join him on presenting to the Maryland Municipal League about annexations and how they work in the state of Maryland. And then we had Joel Binkley with the Charles County Government. He's a planner three. He joined us and added some of the county's requirements. So I'm not, I'm not Joe Griffiths, and so, and I don't have all of his notes on everything that he put. So I'm just going to kind of, is it going to let me do it? It might not let me do it. But anyway, so the, Joe talked about the Maryland Annexation Handbook, the Municipal Annexation Handbook, that is available online, that anyone can go and look at those. That's the general outline of how annexations need to happen in the state of Maryland. You can go to the next page. And he was talking about why people would want to annex within, from the state's perspective, looking at public utilities, tax base, having the municipal influence and control over development, achieving municipal growth goals, support economic community development, facilitate development of community amenities, and promoting smart growth. We looked at the state and local government Article 4-415, which is the article that talks about the municipal growth element. And he talked about specifically three areas of, you know, when you cannot, when an annexation wouldn't work, is if a property is not contiguous to the town boundary, it cannot be annexed. We also talked about right-of-ways and how there's some instances, we had this issue with our, the hub annexation, where there's a right-of-way, and if you annex in the right-of-way, and you might have an enclave situation. And then if there's an area that's, you know, they want to annex, and it's within the municipal growth boundary, but it's not, again, directly contiguous to the town boundary, you wouldn't be able to annex it. Sure. It has to be directly adjacent to the town boundary, abutting. No, it has to be abutting the town boundary. Yeah. So again, he was talking about enclaves and gave an example of the growth limit and how there was someone that wanted to annex, but it was, there was land that was vacant, or that was not incorporated into the municipality in the center. So it's a little hard for me to explain it. He talked about notifications and the requirements for public notices and public hearings under the state and local government article. Instructions for, so the Maryland Department of Planning, they do have to review all of the annexations, and they have a 30-day review period. So they talked about the timeframe and what they actually review for when they're looking at specific annexations that have been submitted. And talked about some of the things that they specifically look at. There's the five-year rule. If the land use or the density is significantly different from between the county and the town when it's annexed into the town, there's a required five-year rule unless the county issues a waiver for that. So for example, with the hub, it was zoned rural residential, and they moved it to a mixed-use development. That's a significant difference in land use, density, and intensity. Therefore, they would have a five-year rule. They couldn't do anything or build anything within five years unless the county issues a waiver. Then they're also in charge of determining priority funding areas. So most of the town is within the priority funding area. However, there is a minimum density that needs to be met in order to be designated as priority funding area. So we did have a conversation earlier about creating a new zoning classification for anything that's within the municipal growth area. That's, again, on my to-do list. But with the current situation that we find ourselves in, it's not an urgent matter to do. But we do have to look at that and see whether it's going to be priority funding area as it's brought into the town. And that can affect different aspects. So if it's a single lot that's being brought in, and they're looking to get Bay Restoration Grant funding, if it's not a priority funding area, they're not eligible. So that's important for when we have someone coming in on septic, septic and well. If they need that grant assistance, they have to be designated priority funding area. It's becoming, yes. Yes. So so far, we had three single-lot annexations that were brought in. We had 143 Morgans Ridge Road. We had, and the two lots over on La Plata Road. And all of them, I had to require a waiver through MDE in order to get them, to get the Bay Restoration Grant funding, which was a very difficult process. Yes. So it'd be much easier to zone them, a zone that designates as priority funding area than to go through that whole waiver process.
Yes.
It took almost a year to get all three.
Okay. Thank you.
And then we came into my portion of the presentation. So I did a little introduction on the town history, looked at the kind of census records, quick facts about our population and how it's grown. In 2010, we were 8,753 residents, and as of 2022, it was 10,404. So I just gave a brief overview of where we were located, a little bit of our history, and where we came from. And talked about why the town annexes land. I talked about the town's interests of expanded tax base. Obviously, commercial and industrial development have a higher tax revenue compared to residential. The town control over development and how the property is built, and environmental benefits. And I noted that sometimes a lot of people think that that's a crazy notion, that annexing land, how is that going to have any environmental benefits? But when you're extending water and sewer, and instead of putting them on well and septic, and I provided an example of the potential nitrogen reduction when you connect to the town's water and sewer system, and how if you have a, I used the example of a single-family dwelling unit, and this is one of the things I had to do for the Maryland Department of the Environment waiver for the Bay Restoration Grant funding. If you have a single-family dwelling unit that's on well and septic, they're producing about 23 pounds of nitrogen per year. When you connect to the town's wastewater treatment plant, that's reduced down to 1.94 pounds of nitrogen per year. So it's a significant difference if you think about all the, all the homes that are on well and septic. We talked about property owner interests, which, again, is very similar. Water and sewer connections, getting failed septics and getting that Bay Restoration Grant funding, and development, the county zoning versus town zoning. It may be more beneficial for the developer to have that as well, as well as the priority funding area. And limiting factors, these are all things that we've been discussing lately. Water and sewer, schools, fire and EMS, police, medical services, these are all things that, as we do annexations, need to be taken into consideration. And right now, we're facing that serious discussion on water and how we're going to provide water moving forward. And that's why I'm making sure to keep track of how much we're using, how much we have remaining, so that way we do not go over the allocations that we have through MDE. Next page, please. I discussed our municipal growth element and our 2020 Comprehensive Plan, how we determined the municipal growth boundary, and that it was created through not only input from the residents, Charles County Government, the Planning Commission, Town Council, and that we can only annex land that's within our municipal growth boundary. Anything that does not provide or promise, but I do note that nothing is promised approval. If you're in the municipal growth boundary, it doesn't mean you will be annexed. There's the, that's the only way that you can be annexed.
And let me turn that one around. When you say, within the municipal growth boundary as defined by the Comprehensive Plan.
Correct.
Right? So let's say we're eight years into a Comprehensive Plan. Someone wants to be annexed. They have to wait till the next Comprehensive Plan?
The, I mean, if the Town Council decided to amend the Comprehensive Plan, if it was something that was going to be beneficial, you can amend your Comprehensive Plan at any time.
Right. So the Comprehensive Plan governs?
Yes.
Whatever addition it happens to be.
Right. And then I just gave a little link to our Comprehensive Plan, so anyone could go and use their phone and find it.
I appreciate you doing that. That's good.
Next page, please. I talked about our zoning categories and how they relate to our land use, future land use map, with our high-density residential, medium-density residential, low-density residential, commercial, mixed-use, planned-unit development, and industrial, and how that correlates between what it's, what it's designated in our land use map and how we would actually come up with a probable zoning category once it was annexed, if it was annexed. Next page, please. I talked about our community outreach and engagement during the 2020 Comprehensive Plan. We did the Steering Committee. We had several listening sessions on different topics. We were, we gave out surveys, questionnaires, and got a lot of input from not only residents, but from people within the Charles County Government and the Maryland Department of Planning as well. And then I just showed the difference between our 2009 municipal growth area and the 2020 municipal growth area. So overall, the total acreages didn't So overall, the total acreages didn't change too, too much. Uh, in 2009, the total was 4,096 acres, and in 2020, it was 4,956 acres. So there was a little bit of an increase, uh, when we looked at, um, some of the areas in that, um, north, northeast-ish quadrant. And next page, please. And so then the next few slides are just showing how the town boundary has changed over time. Started with 1888, and we had 1.5 square miles. And these are approximate, uh, but when we go back that far, I have, I had a picture to look at, and I had to kind of, you know, draw the boundary around where the properties are now. Uh, so it is not perfection, but it's, it's close to what the original town boundary would have looked like. Um, and you can kind of see that when you look at our town seal. Um, and then going into the 1970s, we had one annexation in the 60s, and that was the Will's Memorial Park. And next slide, please. And between 1970 and 1990, uh, we had several annexations. The biggest one was the incorporation of, uh, a lot of the Charles County land in Tillman Lake. It was the eastern annexation. It contained part of the Pine Grove development, what was previously Heritage Green. Uh, that also included, uh, Clark's Run. Uh, and then we had King's Grant in the, um, 80s, uh, as well as, uh, some of the Quailwood and some commercial areas to the north. And next slide, please. And then between 1990 and where we are today. Uh, so in the, um, 90s and early 2000s, we had the rest of Heritage Green, uh, now Pine Grove, Steeplechase, um, and a few others. And then, of course, during 2022, uh, we had the three, uh, annexations for the hub, Hawthorne Yards, and the Villages of Rosewick. So that just kind of shows you how far we've come with our, with our boundary. I gave a very brief overview about the municipal annexation process, how we have our pre-application meeting. Um, it's submitted for council with consensus to proceed. Uh, the annexation, um, is reviewed by the town attorney for, and staff for legal sufficiency. If everything goes the way it's supposed to, the annexation would go to the Maryland Department of Planning and Charles County Government for their 30-day review. We'd schedule the public hearing at the town council. The town council at that point would either adopt it or not adopt it. Um, and there are instances where the annexation could be, um, turned down with the referendum. There are different processes. I didn't realize this. Uh, so I put the Maryland Code Article four dash four one two. Uh, I think there's three different referendum processes that I was not aware of. Uh, so you can look that up, um, to see how that works. And then if it is annexed, then we send a copy of the annexation and the annexation plan to not only the county, the Board of Elections, um, ESTAT, Maryland Department of Planning. We send it out to a lot of people in order to get that officially incorporated into the town boundary. Uh, and then touched on county and municipal coordination in order to transfer over to Joel and his process. So the main things I wanted to point out was that the county where they're really agreeing to what can and cannot be annexed into the town. And that's why we set that up as part of our. And just for that. They do provide, can provide. Planning Department, uh, the county commissioners. We also send it to the Board of Education to provide commentary as well. And we did receive comments on the last few annexations from the Board of Education. Uh, they are all part of the. Uh, we do not currently. Waiver process between the town and the county. We are discussing that right now. It's kind of just ask if you can go before the county commissioners and say, hey, we'd like a waiver. Um, so we're trying to see if we can come up with something that's a little bit. Between the town and county coordinate on that.
So question. What, what, what's approximately from cradle to grave, the annexation process time?
It is dependent on each, uh, different project, the size. Um, sometimes it's a year, sometimes it can take more than that. Uh, but generally, I would say a year to, a year and a half is the kind of full scope of, of how things can go. Um, and then the last thing that I had was the Charles County Water Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, which we're currently working on updating. Um, they have their, they do it twice a year, they do updates. So we're looking at updating that. And then Joel, uh, touched on the county's role, uh, their long-term, short-term infrastructure review, and to waive or not to waive for the five-year rule. And I don't really remember what he said here. He had a lot of his own notes. He kept it very brief on the.
Director Harrington, the one thing that stood out from Joel's presentation was that he asked if we could communicate a little earlier, sooner, um, with our plans. And that was, I think that was the major thing that stood out because pretty much everything that you were saying, you know, he just kind of, like Director Harrington said. Um, so I think the major part was how we communicate what our plans are and the steps we are in the process was important.
Mm-hmm. So I think here he was showing the, um, municipal growth planning cycle for the, but the, how the county looks at it. And then this is the 30-day review. I'm not sure if he had, he might have had stuff to click on for the, the slides because it looks like some stuff is missing. This is the slide that I had. Uh, they do infrastructure reviews of the water and sewer plans, um, the adequate public facilities guidelines, uh, and we do have to coordinate on that. The town doesn't have its own comprehensive water and sewer plan. We do have water and sewer goals that are within our comprehensive plan, but the actual, um, categories are under the town, uh, under the county's jurisdiction. And then this was where he was talking about the, uh, five-year rule waiver and how they don't really have a set process. It's, you can request a hearing, and they can say, okay, we'll hear it or we won't. Um, so we do want to kind of look at how we can coordinate that a little better. And then, uh, Joe did touch on post-annexation procedures, making sure that we were sending everything where it needs to be sent. Um, they have their Planning Practice Monthly Article, which if you're not, uh, can, if you're not subscribed to that, I would recommend it. They do have a lot of good information on the Maryland Department of Planning, um, Practice Monthly Articles. And it's a, it's a really good and useful tool. I utilize it quite often for myself, so. I think that was about it. Again, just talking about their planning resources where you can get more information. If you go to their website, and then our information. And that was it.
Do we have any potential annexations?
Not right now.
Cycle right now?
No.
Um, one of the things, I don't know if you guys get these questions or not.
Actually, we do. So, but we have the consensus right now from the council to not do any new annexations because of our water and sewer status. I believe we have two applicants that have submitted a concept and want to go before the council to have them hear their case. Um, but we're not doing a formal process. I'm not writing a staff report. I'm not collecting fees. Uh, they can ask to speak before the council, and the council can listen to them and, and say yea or nay to moving forward. Uh, so I believe that we are doing that, um, at some point in the next couple of months. I don't know if it's been scheduled yet.
Yeah. So I don't know if you guys are getting questions about the amount of development that we have, but I've had some really grossly exaggerated numbers. I've heard as much as 13,000 units. So Director Harrington has a development capacity analysis as of 7/19 that it would, you know, you, I'm going to ask that you send it to the other planning commissioners just in case they don't have it. And he puts it in proper perspective because it's actually 7,300 proposed, um, construction projects or whatever, dwelling units for the, um, projects. But right now, the only, we only have 625 that have actually have the final plat process approved. Everything else is proposed, it's concept, whatever. But it's not, we don't have 13,000 homes coming. And, and you're hearing those grossly exaggerated, anywhere from 10,000 to 13,000. And I actually had to, you know, um, correct the hospital because that's what they were thinking. And so right now, we only have 625 units approved. And of that, for Pine Grove, and this is the biggest topic, it looks like about 100 or so, uh, are in Pine Grove.
It's what, it's Neighborhood K and Neighborhood O were both approved. Neighborhood K had 176, and Neighborhood O had 68.
Some, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's not, but it's still not, you know.
Right.
10,000, 7,000, 5,000, that they're thinking is going up in Pine Grove right now. So just so that you are aware and you have the information so that when you're hearing tho, those things, we can kind of correct people on the spot. I think it's important.
Upon us to ask for the facts. And, uh, that's good that you brought that up. And I could certainly understand the hospital having a huge interest in that.
Well, they were misinformed, though. They were thinking 10 to 13,000 homes, and I'm like, that's not accurate.
Yeah, no, we've, we've definitely been communicating with the hospital. And then, you know, through, um, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, we've been working with her as well. And as far as, uh, Charles County, I've been keeping up with the fire department and, uh, the, uh, 911 addressing. Uh, so we are making sure that the fire department and the E911 addressing are, have the ability to review and approve the plans as we're going through our technical review team process. Um, so that has been, um, moved forward since we've had these discussions.
Other questions or comments for the director? Well, thank you very much for, uh, redoing that on our behalf. Appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Next item on the agenda is back to you, Planning Department, report.
And Kelly, if you could bring up the updates. For our Planning Department priorities. If you can scroll down a little bit. Uh, so we still are working through our town code revisions. Uh, adequate public facilities ordinance is number one. Uh, we're trying to make sure that we're doing this right. It's, it's taking a long time, but it's because we want to make sure that we are putting in all of the necessary steps, thinking about everything, how it needs to work. Um, Chapter 181, uh, the Vehicles and Traffic Chapter, that's actually finishing up on the legal review. And so we'll be bringing that forward to, uh, Town Council for review. Uh, we're also looking at Chapter One in our Municipal Infractions, uh, chapter to kind of simplify a lot of the different codes. Right now, each chapter and the several sections that have their own code enforcement and violation process, it's all the same. So we're all, we're just putting it under Chapter One, Article Three, and we're just going to reference that under all the codes as we move forward. Um, still working through Chapter 170. Uh, of course, 191, not only the sign code, but the parking requirements, um, and zoning requirements. And Chapter 117 for health and sanitation. Uh, Keep La Plata Beautiful has really been an integral part of updating this chapter. And since, uh, the bird city be, you know, tree city, uh, looking to be a bee city, uh, looking at updating our, uh, code enforcement actions and creating a healthy habitats, um, application that would be reviewed and approved by, um, you know, anyone that's certified within the Keep La Plata Beautiful. We have several master gardeners and people that are very knowledgeable to try to encourage native plantings, um, and pollinator gardens in the town. Our, uh, new software for permitting is, uh, anticipated to go live at the end of 2023. Uh, we are right now in Phase Four, which is the development and testing portion. So we, each week, we meet, uh, with their developers, and we make sure that it's doing what we want it to do. Um, and then once we get into Phase Five Training, and then Phase Six will be go live. So we're hoping by the end of the year that it'll be live. But it's looking like it's going to be a much better product for us to use. Um, for our Planning Department priorities, I also have broken out GIS maps. Um, we have noted that we need to work on our ward map because of the, uh, new annexations that we have. Um, and the way that the town boundary has changed, we haven't updated it in quite a while. So it's out of date and needs to be, uh, looked at. I'm working on some parks and recreation maps, development permit review maps, um, zoning parcel updates. And with the town boundary, that's, was, uh, completed for the annual report and also for the, um, update for our new town permitting software and town website. And then I mentioned the Charles County Water and Sewer, um, Comprehensive Plan. I'm going through and working with the county to update that to make sure that they have the appropriate water and sewer categories. If they're S1, they're connected. If it's S3, it's under design. S5 means it could be connected in the future, but it's not really something that's right there. And S6 means that it's, there's no planned connections. We want to make sure that everything's zoned appropriately. Uh, the Sustainable Communities designation was officially approved. Uh, so I made sure to put the, um, boundary, um, showing the, how that was updated. The red, uh, outline was the original boundary that was approved in 2017. And then we have added the blue areas, uh, which does contain some, uh, lower-income residential units. We're hoping that we have the opportunity to provide some grant funding, uh, different, different options to help assist with any community revitalization that might be, uh, available. Uh, so it's something that we're looking to get technical assistance from the Department of Housing and Community Development. Uh, they've been an excellent, um, tool for us, and we haven't really utilized them. So we're hoping that with this, we can, um, improve the downtown and some of the residential areas that are, uh, in that area. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for the director? Thank you very much for that. I will go to Councilwoman Bryant Ward for Town Council update.
Well, I think the, the, last night, we had National Night Out, and it was really great. There were 60 communities participating in Charles County. Um, all of the, uh, council members and the mayor, um, rode along with the, um, Police Department. And I think the, the most wonderful thing I got out of last night was the growth of our Police Department. Um, 2021, we were talking about not having enough police officers, not being able to recruit. And we have recruited some amazing young talent. And seeing them in the community last night, engaging and, and looking the professional part, acting the professional part, um, engaging with residents. It was just really wonderful to see that. You know, we were not, um, people like to say we just, we have an older Police Department. We do not. We have a very young Police Department, and they look amazing. And the leadership that, um, uh, Chief Schinner has groomed is excellent. Um, Lieutenant Norris is now Captain Norris. Um, Lieutenant Payne is now Captain Payne. And seeing them engage and embrace those young guys, Detective Voice, um, seeing them, you know, nurture those young guys, it was just a good thing to see. So it was a great night. Um, we went around to, I think, my escorts and I went to five different, um, national nights out and engaged the residents. So it was a good night.
Anything else to report?
That's it for us.
Well, thank you for that. Any questions for our Councilwoman? Okay, future agenda items. Anything to add to rules and procedures?
Not at this time.
Is there anything else for the good of the commission to be brought up? Yes, uh, Commissioner Sampson is the vice chair. Yeah. That happened several meetings ago. Um, okay, with nothing else, thank you all. We'll adjourn the meeting at, looks like that's about 48 minutes after this hour. Okay. Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.